Good evening, it's six o'clock, so I would like to call the meeting to order. Um, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight.
Motion to adopt, yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, um, and there is no old business this month, so we'll go into new business. In regards to RA dash zero five dash two four, um, I now call to order a public hearing to consider application RA zero five two four, a rezoning request for point four seven acre property located at six twenty eight South Street from single-family urban R two to commercial medium-density C two.
Good evening Commissioners.
Good evening.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, happy holidays, and my name is Sean Daniels, I'm the zoning administrator. And if we don't have any questions, I'd like to just dive right into RA dash zero five dash twenty four. This is in regards to the rezoning request for a point four seven acre property located at six twenty eight South Street. The applicant MMCC LC MC MMCC Fund LLC is proposing to rezone a single-family urban property to commercial medium-density C two. So this particular property is located approximately seven hundred and sixty feet south of State Route seventy-eight, which is known as West Bankhead Highway. It is also three hundred and sixty feet west of Commerce Drive. Uh, the property currently has a one thousand two hundred and seven square foot uh house that is actually located on that property. It was built um on at nineteen seventy-one. So a little history about that particular property and the surrounding parcels that's actually around it. Um, in March two thousand twenty-three, the applicant requested for a rezoning for the uh property that's north of the subject property. Uh, it was six twenty-four South Street along with three other par properties. Uh, the applicant actually requested to rezone uh these properties from R two, which is family uh family urban residential R two to commercial medium-density C two to facilitate a lot merger in order to attract a national sit-down restaurant development. City Council did approve this request unanimously five to zero. Uh, the applicant came back in November two thousand twenty-three to request nine variances for surrounding eight properties. Um, the reason was they wanted to deviate from various city standards, uh particularly landscaping buffers and parking layouts to create a multi-user commercial site. Eight of those variances were approved uh by City Council unanimously five to zero, and one was redrawn.
Was drawn by the applicant?
Yes ma'am. Now, this is the proposed development that was given to staff uh last year. And as you can see, that multi-commercial development that's actually there, and uh that six twenty-eight South Street, which is the subject parcel, uh it's actually right there in that orange. So based on all the information that the applicant actually provided to staff, uh the city, city staff actually wants to recommend for approval. Uh, the reasons is the cities, it does, it is congruent with the city's comprehensive plan. Um, the applicant's request is uh R two, and it is supported as well as the commercial medium-density zoning is consistent with the surrounding areas as well as what the uh applicant actually wanted to rezone those surrounding properties from R two to C two. As well as the proposed commercial development represents the highest and best used land compared to maintaining that property, and the applicant just carving out that commercial development and leaving that particular partially uh property R two. Uh, staff did want to add a condition that the applicant must perform a lot merger combining six twenty-eight South Street with those rezoned C two properties in which is aligned with the proposed commercial site plan.
Can you back up to the site plan? I know, but I wanted to make sure people that are hearing this later can hear me.
Now, you all are looking at the proposed multi-commercial site plan. Um, south of that six twenty-eight South Street is a proposed um detention or retention pond as well as uh a good amount of parking, which is why the applicant's actually trying to propose to rezone that that property. Because uh as you all know, something like a large sit-down chain will require uh quite uh quite a bit of parking, and if it's going to be a multi uh commercial unit or a multi-unit, then um it will need space for a rather large detention and retention pond.
Thank you. Now, would the applicant like to step forward to the podium, please?
Good evening, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm Jeff Matthews, two fifteen West Bankhead Highway, Billerica, Georgia. And I'm here representing applicant obviously tonight, but also the Sheffields, and I'll give you a little history about that piece of property. Mister and Miss Sheffield are both eighty-eight years old, and they are moving into an assisted living facility. And they have owned this house since nineteen seventy-eight. They've got seniority on me. Uh, I started assembling some of those properties in nineteen eighty-five, and this will be the ninth piece of the puzzle that we're trying to put together. And their daughter, they raised six kids in Billerica, Georgia. And their daughter, Dr. Rhonda Sheffield, is here this evening. She's the, as they say, the baby girl, but she's a pretty good negotiator. And so what we're trying to do is put that piece of property with the rest of this development to make it all flow better. We did include that piece of property's hydrology calculations in that detention pond because we built a detention pond out there that after a big rain, you could surf in. But we would just ask that um you affirm the decision or the recommendation of the planning staff. If you have any questions, be glad to try to answer them. But it will give us better interparcial access. It will also give us the ability, two years, five years from now, when we are through with most of the development, we will be able to clean out that detention pond better with a long-stick excavator. We can get around it better. And we have, in furthering that aim of interparcial access, we have dedicated the right-of-way for the South Street extension, which goes in behind the new fire station from Chick-fil-A. Don't know if you've been on that road yet, but it really helps traffic so far. And we have also dedicated, up at the left side of that, the south end of the property, we've dedicated the right-of-way to the city to open up Metalark Drive, which will further enhance motivation or movement in that area. So if you've got any questions, I'd be trying to, glad to try to answer them. Thank you.
Alright, at this time, I'm gonna open um a meeting for public comments. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name, address, for the record. And anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the application? No one? Alright, so Sean, would you like to return to the podium, please? Does anybody have any additional questions for Sean?
No.
You're free.
Well, I, can I ask a question right quick, sorry? I know the speaker who spoke before spoke about traffic alleviation via current plans. Would those, would, would the plan to extend that road, that would fall on the city, right? We would have to do investment to, to um in infrastructure to, to extend that road?
Yes, but to my knowledge, uh I do believe a third party is actually finishing constructing that road.
Right.
Okay.
Because of the development.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning request from R two to C two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Alright, next on the agenda. TA dash one-two dash two-four text amendment to establish section six point eleven, PUD dash industrial, and add new definition to section thirteen point zero one. Nina?
Okay, now can you hear me? Okay, there we go. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't think it was on. Um, so for anybody who was here last month and for all those watching online, we spent a significant amount of time going through some proposed text amendments. Um, one thing we walked through as a leadership team um was getting all the way through our Code of Ordinance Amendment and taking back some of the feedback that, that you all provided at that. Um, moving forward with our zoning text amendments, we will notice those and treat those similarly to any other rezoning in that there will be a public hearing to follow as well. So this evening, for your consideration, um staff uh again has been reviewing the zoning ordinance and looking to update uh certain language, add new sections, or further define language that needs additional clarification. Um, this particular one text amendment seeks to introduce a new section and define new land use. The Technology Park Overlay District is established for the development of a higher echelon technology and business development, seeking to develop separate facilities for management headquarters, data centers, training areas, low-impact light manufacturing, motion picture, television, and other multimedia production, research and development operations, and offices. Staff has been, as you know, working on these text amendments um over the, over the past few months, and these changes will continue to encourage zoning compatibility, adherence to zoning ordinance, and continued responsible growth. The Technology Park Overlay District provides such facilities that are often grouped together in order to provide common amenities such as adequate and convenient parking, service, and utilities. Operations shall cause no radiation or radioactivity at any exterior wall and no electrical radiation that affects any operation or equipment other than those of the creator of the radiation. The establishment of such a district requires a predetermined development plan, appropriate screening, adequate separation from other land uses, and more stringent controls. It is the primary intent of this district to allow for such areas in order to meet contemporary needs. The following sections are addressed within the Technology Park Overlay District: permitted uses, permitted accessory uses, lot standards, lighting requirements, parking requirements, landscaping, and buffering and noise. So just to kind of take it a step further, an overlay district, sometimes known as an overlay zone, it's a geographic area that's layered on top of another existing zoning district or districts that implements additional regulations. An overlay district is frequently used in zoning codes to protect sensitive environmental features or um in some cases of historic overlay districts to preserve historic buildings, prevent development or unstable or vulnerable land features, or to promote a specific type of development. Um, like other zoning regulations, overlay districts can be, can control building codes and urban design, permitted land use density, and other factors. The overlay district often fills in a gap where traditional zoning does not address specific or complicated local or multi-jurisdictional issues. Overlay districts can streamline the implementation of additional regulations in all applicable areas without having to amend the codes for multiple districts and maintain consistency um across jurisdictional, national, historic, or infrastructure needs. A technology overlay district is created for the purpose of promoting the development of technology centers in the areas of the city where existing or proposed infrastructure could adequately support said uses. By their nature, these uses may require sizable acreage, often operating and designed in a campus-like atmosphere, and are developed with a functional separation from dense residential and commercial retail development. A technology overlay district can further the city's effort to attract and advance high-tech industrial development while limiting impacts on the community. Um, and I can kind of skim through or read word for word, whichever you like, the actual presentation of the text amendment. So the purpose of the Technology Park Overlay District is established for the development of higher echelon technology and business development, seeking to develop separate facilities for management headquarters, data centers, training areas, low-impact light manufacturing, motion picture, television, and other multimedia production, research and development operation offices. Again, such facilities are often grouped together in order to provide those common amenities. Um, principally permitted uses. Um, the following uses shall be permitted in a Technology Park Overlay District: administrative operations such as finance and insurance, commercial printing, commercial testing laboratories, communication equipment manufacturing, computer and electronic repair calibration, computer operations and data processing, data centers, corporate offices or headquarters, design and engineering, drugs and pharmaceutical distribution and of or manufacturing, educational services, electronic component manufacturing, electrical substation, hospitals, clinics, medical and dental offices, medical and dental laboratories, and veterinary clinics, industrial control manufacturing used in industrial production for controlling equipment or machines, management professional services, metalworking machinery production, motion picture, television, and other multimedia production, office machine manufacturing, office and research, public and government buildings, pilot plants and production facilities, plastic composite production manufacturing, research and development manufacturing, special industry machinery manufacturing, transportation equipment manufacturing, and an unlisted use for which the director may approve, an unlisted use in the zoning district where the unlisted use is a similar type and in nature to those listed in the district. Permitted accessory uses. Permitted accessory uses are as follows: employee lunchrooms, temporary outside storage if the same is in conjunction with the pilot plants or production facility uses, subject to being screened from adjoining properties; recreational facilities for use by tenants, employees, and clients; private temporary living quarters associated with research and development; storage facilities within wholly enclosed buildings; water storage facilities; trash receptacles; telecommunications structures; onsite daycare provided by businesses within the park for their employees; security structures which may be installed within buffers and setbacks if located at approved entrances and exits; battery storage, alternate fuel storage. Lot standards are similar to those found um within our industrial district, but our um minimum lot area would be uh five-acre setback requirement, minimum lot width a hundred and fifty feet, minimum lot frontage fifty feet, building height forty-five feet. Excludes parapet walls, rooftop mechanical equipment, and penthouses. Front setback fifty feet, side setback fifty feet, rear setback fifty feet. Minimum distance from structures on the same lot, ten feet. Maximum lot coverage sixty percent, maximum lot coverage for totally total impervious surface eighty percent. Required lot standards shall only apply to external property boundaries with other properties not zoned as part of the Technology Park District. Minimum lot frontages within acreage shall not apply to subdivided lots within the Technology Park District so long as the entirety of the contiguous development complies with these standards and so long as the subdivided lot has adequate frontage on public or private roads and access drives to allow service. Lighting shall meet the requirements of section one, seven point one-two of our zoning ordinance. Parking requirements. Each building shall provide twenty-five parking spaces minimum. Incillary office buildings and other occupiable structures shall park at one space per five hundred square feet. Joint parking areas serving multiple buildings may be permitted onsite. Handicap accessible parking shall be provided in conformance with federal ADA requirements. Parking areas shall not extend into buffer areas. Unloading shall be onsite and not within the right-of-way. Parking spaces geometric shall conform with section seven oh two of our zoning ordinance. Buffer yards for our Technology Park overlay uses. Adjacent to residential district, a minimum seventy-five-foot buffer yard shall be maintained separating the Technology Park property from all residential zoning districts. The buffer yards shall be planted per the type four buffer yard standards within our zoning ordinance. Adjacent to the commercial zoning district, a minimum thirty-foot buffer yard shall be maintained separating the Technology Park property from all commercial zoning districts. The buffer yard shall be planted per the type three buffer yard standards of the zoning ordinance. Adjacent to industrial zoning districts, a minimum of ten-foot buffer yard shall be maintained separating the Technology Park property from all industrial zoning districts. The buffer yards shall be planted per the one-type buffer yard standards of the zoning ordinance. V fences within the temp Technology Park Overlay District may exceed the maximum listed fence height of eight foot in the zoning ordinance in all set backyards. For noise, generator testing is limited to the hours between seven AM and five PM, except for generator testing or commissioning activities. Generator use is limited to backup or emergency use only.
Any questions? For anybody? Any questions? But do y'all have any questions for Nina? No? And now we'll open public comment. If you are in favor, if you would like to come to the podium, state your name and address. Anyone opposed? Would you like to make a motion? Do you want to make a motion? Who? You have a comment? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Um, my, my concerns with this are um, this is sort of, uh, this is almost like a retail equivalent of saying like Walmart or Amazon only, and then they're largely going to be unrestricted once they're here. So let me explain what I mean by that. Um, so in terms of the five-acre requirement, I looked at uh Carrollton, Douglasville, Dallas, Kennesaw, and Decatur. And only Dallas and Kennesaw have similar zones identified. Both of them have a one-acre uh minimum, and then Dallas adds an additional one hundred and fifty-foot either width or setback. It was a little unclear. Uh, Carrollton, it would likely fall in an M one or office institutional, and it doesn't appear that there's a minimum lot size requirement. Douglasville, light industrial or office institutional, also no clear lot size requirement. Uh, Decatur, it would be office institution, mixed-use four, mixed-use five, and those have a minimum five thousand square foot for, if it's residential, and no minimum for non-residential uses. So this would represent a pretty extreme um limitation as compared to uh really any that I could reference. I was uh gonna do Cartersville, and I ran out of time. But uh, I think, so that requirement is pretty extreme, and I think, given the resources required for a five-acre lot, you're sort of limiting, if you're limiting anybody, you would be limiting sort of smaller, like an upstart business, maybe something that's more local. It, it really wouldn't restrict larger uh companies. And a couple of these uses, I think like, I don't even know if it, if it would be a reasonable sort of expectation, for example, for educational services, uh pharmaceutical um distribution to, to have a five-acre lot. I don't, I don't know if that's normal or not. Um, and then, so the, my other concern is that it doesn't actually address any performance standards. So it kind of seeks, it, it's almost like it hopes to be restrictive enough to not be concerned with noise, traffic, lighting, air quality. Um, none of those were mentioned except lighting, which was said to follow section seven dot, seven twelve, I think. And so I think some of the, if, if we want to identify this as a zone, I think, or as an overlay, I think um at, at the minimum, we have to sort of refer noise, traffic, air quality. Wh-where can we reference what those standards would be? If we don't outline any, then I would worry that after approval, it's, it's, we're not stating anything. We don't have a requirement a- at that point.
With regard to the noise and the uh, and the lighting, we have restrictions that apply to everything in the city. So it would apply to this as, as well as every other zone within the city. We have some regulations on that. I mean, you can also, you can always adjust those within a zone, but if you didn't do that, there, we already regulate that within, throughout the entire city.
To Andrew's point, uh, I guess my question would be, how did you, it is on, maybe I'm just not close enough to it. I speak too softly. Um, with regards to some of the points that Andrew brought up, um, I guess my question would be, how did, how did we get to five acres as the minimum lot size?
I think intentionally, um, not to say it wouldn't be a small business startup included within, but I think the intent was to create more of a corporate campus-type atmosphere within that overlay um so that a tenant perhaps could be a small business, a startup, engineer, design-type firm. Um, but I think the intent of the overlay was to create a bigger boundary for, for that corporate campus-type feel, if that makes sense.
Is there, I, I don't want to make you like pop up and down like a, like a whack-a-mole, I'm sorry. Um, I guess my uh, my follow-up question then is, is there, it seem, so this is, so this is, would be purely, I think you said in du- industrial, uh potentially commercial, uh zoning overlay, there would be overlays onto commercial or industrial?
Right.
So there's no room in here for, so we're not talking about kind of like those mixed-use developments where we have some residential spots and some like restaurants and some also maybe like, we're not like live, work, play, this is not what we're talking about.
Not with this overlay, no.
Okay.
Although, along those lines, I would um, I mean, we do have an unlisted use. One of the permitted uses is an unlisted use, so.
Theoretically, if you had, you know, let's say, uh, an area in which it was primarily industrial with low-dense residential, you could provide for the overlay in that entire area, correct? I, I don't think intentionally that would be the, the target. I think the, the aim would be to create that campus separate, but it could, you are correct.
And are there already environmental regulations, like requirements to do environmental testing, to study environmental impacts on the types of developments that would be, that would fall under this overlay? Um, I know Andrew mentioned noise, um, air quality, things like that, that, that might be governed by other regulations, but I just want to make sure that uh, especially with some of the items on this list related to manufacturing, related to uh electrical sub, substations, related to data centers, I know that there's a lot of um possible controversy around the environmental impact and the impact on residents who live near these areas. And I guess my question is, um, would this overlay, would it be possible to uh necessitate or request or ask for additional environmental studies to make sure that we're not going to negatively impact residents who live nearby?
I think because that is specific to those specific uses, that would probably, I believe intentionally, we would make that a condition.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
No questions.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt the text amendment changes as written.
All in favor?
No, I need a second.
I'll second.
Sorry. All in favor? All opposed?
Three to one. Three to one? Four to one, sorry. Four to one.
Okay. Next, we have the rezoning and annexation for Highway 61 and South Van Wirt, Avamoore, ANX-01 and 2-24, RA-06-24.
Me again.
Hey, Deanna.
Hi. Okay, bear with me, and my report is not as pretty as Sean's. He clearly has more skills than I do at PowerPoint creation and all things mapping. But we do substance, substance over form. Everything required is included within this report. So, tonight, we have before you a presentation for the rezoning and annexation request for Highway 61 and South Van Wirt. So, again, this is both a rezoning application as well as two annexations, which I am combining into one presentation. Through your files, you will see one cover sheet, one planning report, two annexations, one cover sheet, one planning report, rezoning, but we are including all together in the presentation this evening. All right, so, just to give a little background on the story, the applicant seeks an annexation and rezoning for parcel ID 1680090, which is off of Hickory Level Road, and parcel ID 1690120, which is 2664 South Van Wirt Road, as with an amended survey to reflect a parcel split for the residents on the property to remain within Carroll County. The applicant seeks rezoning with the annexation from Carroll County zoning designation, conservation use, and agricultural to a planned unit development PUD, which includes the expansion of the current PUD in place to include industrial. So, a little additional background, the City Council approved the Avamoore project at 55 and 63 Goldworth Road in 2018, with a total of 200 single-family units, 300 multifamily units, and live-work units, along with a host of other uses, including senior housing, which includes independent living, memory care, and a minimum age restriction of 55 years.
Hey, Deanna, as you're pointing this out, can you point to which is the ones we're looking at?
Absolutely. So, this is where the PUD currently exists, this parcel. We are looking at the annexation of Hickory Level Road here and South Van Wirt here. Okay?
And is that left part county?
This all right here is county. So, this is currently county.
Validate, okay.
And then this is currently county. All right? Okay. So, sorry. In 2020, the city increased the total number of single-family lots to no more than 250 units and multifamily units to a maximum of 325 units. In 2021, the City Council approved an additional 290 units of senior housing with a minimum age of 55 years. The applicant returned each year to extend their zoning approvals for another year as specified in the original and subsequent conditions placed on the conditionally approved project. In September of 2024, the applicant filed an extension to the previously approved PUD and sought to extend and alter the PUD to include light industrial. The application was denied by Planning and Zoning Commission, and the applicant was instructed to file a new application that would effectively remove the previously approved housing units and mixed-use components. The new PUD would change to a medium industrial. The applicant withdrew the application and filed a new application. Following this process, the applicant filed two requests for annexation 01 and 02, 2024, and a rezoning application from Carroll County agricultural and conservation use to PUD as expanded to include light industrial and additional permitted uses being considered simultaneously as a text amendment for a technology overlay park, park overlay, excuse me. Following the approval of the text amendment for a technology overlay park, the proposed use could include a corporate campus with administrative operations, technology park with electrical substations, research and development, or other computer operations or data processing, to name a few. So, to zero in a little bit closer, again, skills aren't quite as good. This is the lot off Hickory Level Road, excuse me, yes, no, South Van Wirt, thank you. This is the totality of the lot on South Van Wirt that's looking at going from agricultural to be included in the expanded PUD to include industrial. This is the portion to be carved out to remain within the county. This is the parcel to be included off of Hickory Level Road within the PUD to include industrial. So, current conditions, the properties currently lack any use, they're conservation, agricultural. The property character is typical of a vacant undeveloped lot surrounded by additional agricultural properties. Reviewing the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan prescribed the parcel as a suburban village, and by the parcel, I'm referring to the Avamoore project. And within the comprehensive plan, goals were to create nodes and areas where potential for future developments exist, and to establish development patterns focused on clustered commercial development around the intersection of prominent roads, such as community crossroads, and include immediate surrounding residential areas which are suburban in nature. The most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted. Unlike the current vacant use of the property, the proposed rezoning and development is the most desirable use based on a comprehensive plan and overall character of the area. Proposed industrial development along Highway 61 corridor is the most desirable, being least impactful on schools and traffic. Rezoning to PUD with the inclusion of an industrial use would give the parcel an economic advantage by providing further development. However, to note, any increases in utility demand could potentially cause disruption challenges in the area. Responsible development and growth, the southwestern portion of the city is expected to grow with residential and commercial uses in the future. The applicant has not indicated any roadway improvements on any previously submitted concept plans. Excessive usage of city infrastructure could be possible, however, just to note, water in this area is provided by the county, not the city. Sewer capacity and conveyance will have to be agreed upon in the form of a development agreement. The proposed Avamoore industrial component shares geographical characteristics as the city's existing industrial areas, budding residential and commercial properties, such as, and I'll flip to the zoning map next, so you can kind of see it. The northeast industrial park on Highway 101 abuts agricultural residential uses to the south and borders unincorporated Carroll County to the north. The east industrial park in Douglas County abuts I-20, exit 26, commercial properties to the west, residential subdivision, Mary Lake, to the northeast, and unincorporated Douglas County to the east and southeast. So, this is our current zoning map, and the two areas previously described are here, where you have residential here, residential here, agricultural, agricultural, and then unincorporated Carroll County here, and then to the east, Douglas County here, I-20, commercial, residential. This is the area that we are currently reviewing, and I apologize for my map skills. It would then look like this. Staff's recommendation is approval. With no objections received from Carroll County, city staff recommends approval of both the annexation of parcel ID 1680090 Hickory Level Road and approval of the annexation and recommended split of parcel ID 1690120 266 South Van Wirt Road to allow the residents, as identified in the amended survey, to remain in Carroll County, and rezoning approval from conservation and agricultural to the expanded PUD to include light industrial with conditions, conditions including, no additional residential units will be proposed or approved with this PUD zoning. Number two, sewer capacity and conveyance to be addressed and agreed upon with the city in the form of a development agreement. And just two other points that I don't have highlighted on this presentation, but I want to note specifically from the comprehensive plan, in terms of our goals, we have development patterns, and our development pattern goal one is to maintain small-town character and cultural identity while supporting growth, and the strategy to achieve this 1.2 is to ensure non-residential development on the future development map is compatible with existing character and scale of surrounding areas, which I feel like is identified in the northwest and eastern corridors. Development pattern six promote quality corridor development. Development pattern strategy 6.1 evaluate the need to develop design standards for corridor development to help mitigate traffic mobility issues in high-traffic areas and to ensure that new development and redevelopment is designed to be compatible with the functions of the corridor. Social and economic development, our social and economic development goal three is outlined in the comprehensive plan, is to create employment opportunities within the city and expand business diversity. Strategy 3.2 promotes high-quality employment centers, industrial, commercial, office, and gateway through enforcing development regulations related to building and site design and buffer and landscape requirements in accordance with the future development map. And strategies 3.3 identify and promote opportunities for higher-paying jobs in small business. Strategy 3.4 identify opportunities to accommodate expansion of industrial real estate, including infill development where appropriately located, and strategy 3.5 pursue annexation opportunities within a general urban growth area as depicted on the future development map based on determination of economic feasibility and benefit.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Evening, everyone. My name is Joe Fowler. I'm a lawyer in Douglasville. Let me introduce Mike Embry. He's here with us tonight. As noted earlier in September, we appeared before the city to request the council to extend the Avamoore PUD. It was, as you may remember, kind of an evergreen situation where you have to come back and come back. There were some requirements that also had to be extended. You may have seen some of this in the data, a letter to Three Rivers RDC, the Regional Development Commission about what was going on with Avamoore, a traffic study had to be done, and an issue regarding water tower. All that stuff is underway. The city approved that. At that time, we noted that the new owner of Avamoore, Mr. Embry, was under contract to purchase this land that you've been seeing displayed on the board, that is, the acreage in Carroll County, 200, thereabouts, plus an additional 35. All of that would be added to this Avamoore assemblage and then to be annexed into the city. The annexation were papers, papers were filed by our office. The county did not object to that proposed annexation, and at a future city council meeting, the city will have to vote on whether or not to approve that. I will note this, the purchase of that annexation property has taken place at this point. The request before you now, as explained just a moment ago, is to add the annexation parcels, that's the 200 acres, more or less, plus the 35 acres, minus a five-acre carve-out. Add all of that to the Avamoore PUD and to include light industrial uses in the PUD. That's what's technically before you for your approval tonight. You've heard the explanation about the Technology Park overlay district, and the Avamoore owner will move ahead with marketing of the project consistent with those listed uses that are provided in the overlay district. It's innovative for the city of Villarica to sort of put a stake in the ground to say that what we're interested in is something other than just apartments and other smaller uses. Our request is to do, as I said a moment ago, to approve the inclusion of the annexation parcels in the Avamoore PUD, less that five-acre parcel, and then, secondly, to include light industrial as a permitted use. And then, what types of uses are we talking about? You've seen that displayed with respect to the technology overlay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioner. I'll be glad to respond to any questions you may have. All righty.
Can I just ask a very direct question?
Yes.
Because I've heard a couple of different plans about this property. What is, what is the current owner's intended use for this property?
If you take a look at what was just approved in the overlay, that's what they are doing. They're not bound to any certain fixed or firm use at this point. You look at that, and that's what we're annexing. It's annexing and rezoning. It's a large parcel, and it gives us, it's sort of like giving us a canvas in which some of these uses that the city of Villarica is now saying we'd like to see in our city, and that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, we're going to open for public comment. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. My name is Marshall Phipps. I live at 79 Brookside Court. I've actually been following this project for a while now. I noticed there's been a lot of plans thrown around from mixed-use to the recent inclusion of a, I believe it was a data center, a big data center on the property. Definitely in favor for that, especially the data center component. I know that Villarica right now has sort of a situation when it comes to the number of housing outpacing a number of employment opportunities out here. I do think it would be a great idea, especially considering it's just five minutes down the road from me. It could even be a future career for myself, so I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak in opposition of the application?
Was there anyone else in favor?
Ted, excuse me, Ted Williamson, 2701 South Van Wirt Road, which borders this property. Too many unanswered questions yet with her list of industry. I was trying to think of anything you couldn't put in there with her list. So, I think you need to look at the list of what you're changing this to, to be sure what you're going to allow there. And another thing, you're talking about bringing it in rezoned. I haven't seen any rezoning signs on that land since y'all started this project. Nobody's put up anything we want to rezone this, still agricultural. So, you know, just a lot of current, I would like to, if I could get a copy of that that you presented tonight, to look over.
The overlay thing?
Because that sort of caught me off-guard with.
You need a copy of this?
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to give it to me now. I can get it later, but, okay. But that's all I want to say, is like I said, it looks like there's going to be a lot more questions before you do it, and I want rezoning signs put up if y'all want to vote to rezone it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Just for clarity. So, Planning and Zoning Commission, we'd be making a recommendation to council. Wouldn't that public hearing rezoning signs have to be placed before that public hearing? Because that would be the official public hearing? Yes, no?
Yeah, we definitely have to post signs and in the paper before, the public hearing before council.
Don't you think that might have got more people here to make comments tonight? If you had that people going, going.
Yeah, we have posted signs for the rezoning and annexation.
Red road, Van Wirt? On, uh... Eight times every day, and I haven't seen one yet.
It's off of Highway 61.
Well, that's not the property we're talking about full. We're talking about out of county. Y'all want to bring in, I think, the city may have decided we screwed up everything in the city we can. We need more land to screw up. Go into other neighborhoods with industry. So, that's what I was thinking, maybe it might have been intentional that sign was put up on Van Wirt.
Go ahead and ask the question. Turn on the mic.
So, was there a sign put up, or was there not a sign put up?
Yes.
For that parcel that he's talking about?
So, I can answer that. So, the signs were put up off of Goldworth Road, which is leading on to Highway 61. The city does not put out signs for, off of South Van Wirt, because it's not actually within the city currently.
Right, the county would have to do that, correct?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Do we have a relationship with the county where we could request those signs to be placed? Because this seems like a pretty big gap, that a piece of property that is being requested to be annexed into the city, the county is responsible for placing. Because this seems like a pretty big gap, that, that a piece of property that is being requested to be annexed into the city, the county is responsible for placing the signs, if I'm hearing everyone correctly. The county would be responsible for placing those signs. We cannot place those signs, and the county would not place those signs because it's not county business, it's technically city business. So I, I, I live close to, to, to the, to the original piece of land that is, that is the Avamore project is, is proposed to be on. And I actually have a question for the lawyer before I vote on this, because I don't know if I'm allowed to vote about property that is technically adjacent to mine. But, but my question is, there seems to be a gap. There seems to be a gap where citizens aren't being notified that property is being requested to be rezoned and annexed because we can't put the signs out and the county doesn't have business to put the signs out. And so we have citizens who are unaware of this potential rezoning, who might come here to speak in favor or against this recommendation that aren't, that aren't allowed to. And, and where the rezoning sign actually exists isn't, isn't part of the consideration, right? That, that land is already part of the city. I drive by the rezoning request sign on 61 at Goldworth every single day, but that property isn't, isn't, isn't in consideration here. It's the property that is being annexed that's in consideration. So I have a concern that, like, people aren't being made aware to voice their opinion about whether or not they would like to see this move forward.
Jackie Childress, 1050 West Highway 78, Villarica. I have several concerns regarding this because four months ago, we had a meeting regarding the Avamore proposal. At that time, several questions were posed about how many homes, how many apartments, how many this, that, and the other. And I don't think those questions were ever truly, you know, explained, but yet it was all approved and council approved it. I was there at that meeting also. One of the other concerns I have is that I really don't feel like we've done enough environmental, environmental, you know, protection things to look and see the impact of all this on our city. As most of us are aware, the city of Villarica already has a Parkway that was approved in 2018 or maybe even sooner than that, that nobody wants, but we're forced to do. I would hate to see the city of Villarica be in a similar situation again because we did not do our homework. We did not post enough signs for the community to be made aware. And I realize that the community is always changing. People come in, they go out, and, you know, but we're not making the community aware of what's going on within where we live. Another thing that I have a problem with is that, that meeting, Mr., the owner of the property now, made a comment that he had no intentions of ever building one house on any of that property. That's stuck with me, and it's stuck with about 25 others that were there during that meeting that unfortunately are not here tonight. So I have real concerns of if we just give him a blanket open to do whatever he wants to do, we can't go back, we can't change it. It's like we can't go back, we can't change the Parkway that's going to come through. So I just ask that you please take the time to take a step back, relook at everything, get some hard-set rules down that they must follow, because to date, is my understanding, and I could be wrong, they've not built any homes down there, they've done nothing. This is the second application, and they still have done nothing. So I think there, to me, at least, as being the person that heard what he said, this states to me, he still has no intentions of building those homes. And he may come up here and tell you otherwise, but in my mind, I still remember what he said, and a lie is a lie is a lie any way you look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe it's a problem just trying to use common sense, but it looks like.
We, I do need to let you know that we do have a limit typically of three minutes.
This is going to be a problem. Because that, and this might be the best neighbor I could ever have down there, because I don't know. I mean, it could be, but it's just too much I don't know about now. But also, if you go annex property from the county, it looks like you would annex it like it's zoned. Then, after it's in the city, the city would come back and ask, we want this rezoned to their, to your class now. It's agricultural, let the city bring in agricultural, then come back and ask to rezon it to this planned or whatever it is, PUD thing. So like I say, I'm not totally against it. I just got caught off guard and didn't know what was going on.
The famous one gets to speak, Joshua 164 Clive Street, Villarica, Georgia. So there are some things that are a little backwards that we do do. And it's like the rezoning stuff and the signs. You know, we'll put out a sign on a piece of property that, that a person owns the right side, the left side, and then behind it. And a person puts in a, a request to rezon it, if he already owns all that, I don't see any reason to have somebody come up there for that. It's just the same way with this. If you don't put, you can put signs on Goldworth Road, all that, it's a dead-end road. Who going to see it? Nobody going to turn on, you turn on it, boom, there's the trees and a couple of old houses. Nobody going to see it. The other thing is, everybody's talking about the environmental impacts for the data The federal government applies those rules to these data centers and, and these industrial facilities, things of that nature. So we, we could sit here all day long and beat this podium to death about environmental impacts, and there's nothing we can, any of us can do about it. Because we're not the federal government. We're not the state of Georgia, we're not the EPD. That is left up to them. I'm not saying I'm for building all this stuff in Villarica. You all hear me opposed to a lot of it. But at the same time, if someone owns some property and they want to do something, and as long as, as they go through the proper channels of putting the signage out, and if it gets approved, it gets approved. There ain't nothing we can do about it. You know, we, we've learned that with a certain other situation we had.
Anyone else? Are we closing public comment?
Yes, we're closing public comment. Questions for?
Okay, I have a question again, just to clarify again, and it's my, similar to my original question. The, the purpose of tonight's meeting is for us to provide a recommendation to council, at which point another public hearing will have to occur, where signs will have to go out, and maybe we can do a more significant job at making sure signage is there so citizens have the ability to see it. I see a lot of representation tonight. This is the most people I've seen at one of our PNC meetings ever, actually, since I've been on, on the commission. And ultimately, the council will decide whether this property gets annexed. We are only providing a recommendation. And even if we recommend to annex the property, there will still have to be site plans that get approved, use of the property that gets approved, and we'll have to go through all those hurdles. All that's on the table tonight is annexing these two new pieces of property to this already 200-acre property. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I see nodding, so for those listening in online.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And then my second question is, the one thing I didn't understand was, except five acres? Why is that being left out, and what's that for?
I believe the owner, the current, or the previous owner of the property wanted to carve out their, their residence.
Their residence? Oh, okay.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
To answer your question, you do not have a legal conflict if you're just property dear.
Okay. I get the mailers from, every time there's something that comes up around Avamore, I get, so I just want to make sure that I'm not, that I'm separating my interest as a property owner from my interest as a member of this commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor? And then, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
I own like 100, because I love this brand, Ben. Yep, yep. My husband's joining us.